Just going to count us in. Give me a second here. All right, five, four, three, two, one. Good evening and welcome back to the evening session of the Grand Prairie City Council meeting of April 19th. First on our agenda is scheduled delegations and the person who let us know that they were coming was from the Grand Prairie Intercultural Association, Maureen Edumawi. And I apologize, Maureen, if I'm pronouncing that wrong, which I think I am. If you're with us, if you want to turn on your camera, that would be great. There we go. Hi, Maureen, how are you? Maureen, can you tell me your full name and I'll listen on the pronunciation this time?
Okay, my name is Maureen Edumawi.
Edumawi. Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
So, Maureen, you have about five minutes to address council and then council will ask any questions following that.
Okay, thank you. So, my name, like before, my name is Maureen Edumawi and I am representing the Grand Prairie Intercultural Association, an association that promotes understanding and equitable and welcoming community, recognizing and openly celebrating cultural diversity. The Grand Prairie Intercultural Association, GPI for short, acts as a multicultural hub for social integration and cultural harmony for all Canadians, immigrants and refugees moving to this glorious country from different parts of the world. So, GPI has identified a gap in the community and hence one of their programs is the GPI that has a Grand Prairie Intercultural Association, the Grand Prairie Intercultural Association Integration Academy. So, the Integration Academy, we enable immigrants and newcomers to learn the information necessary to integrate and build a successful life here in Canada. The series of educational workshops will cover topics integral to Canadian life as Canadian law, such as Canadian law, education system, mental health, Indigenous peoples of Canada. And I'm glad to say that the Grand Prairie Intercultural Association Integration Academy is starting in May. And there are different agencies that have decided to do the presentations for GPI, for the immigrants and newcomers in Grand Prairie. And we also have other groups because the GPI has recognized groups, programs and events that will help to create a vibrant, inclusive neighborhood as residents experience a sense of belonging, safety and well-being. And some of these groups are the women's group, women's group and the youth group. And then there's also going to be arts and culture from around the world. So, Elia said that these projects and programs will help to create a vibrant, inclusive neighborhood as residents experience a sense of belonging, safety and well-being. So, tonight, we're requesting for funding to help us to carry out the programs and the workshops and seminars as we focus on immigration, multiculturalism, workplace and school diversity and also to help the immigrants have and newcomers have an easy integration. Grand Prairie is fast becoming a diverse community and with diversity comes the implementation of measures to ensure inclusion as newcomers represent many customs and backgrounds. And keeping the people here in Grand Prairie, which I always like, like to retain people here in Grand Prairie, will contribute and enhance our economic growth and community development. So, when people come, newcomers and immigrants, they come to Grand Prairie and there are no programs, there are no events, there are no projects here to keep them to be engaged with the community, to give them a sense of belonging, to have the diversity and inclusion being represented properly, they live. And that is not what I will want Grand Prairie to experience as people live in. And people coming will help to grow or people remaining in Grand Prairie will enhance and contribute the economic growth and community development. So, our goal as the GPI is to create a cohesive, vibrant community where all residents share in an awareness and appreciation of the diverse racial and cultural composition of the society and that the richness of life in Grand Prairie is enhanced by sharing in that diversity. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Maureen. I'll open the opportunity now for questions or comments. Counsel Tison and then Counsel Friesen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for coming in today, Maureen. Really happy to see that this community group is starting to come together. A couple of questions in regard to you coming to council today. So, in your delegation request form, you said council support going forward. In the presentation, you said you were hoping for funding. So, the first question, I guess, and then I'll follow up with the second question. The first question, have you looked into or been directed to our community group funding application process at all for 2022 is the first question?
Thank you for your question. The last time I spoke with Mayor Clayton, she directed me to that and she told me to speak with Amber so that I can be able to apply for those grants.
Yeah, and I would definitely encourage you to do the same as well because that's funding for your community group, which I think is pretty valuable to helping land of immigrants sort of settle and get acclimated to what's happening in Grand Prairie and become a part of our community quicker. I saw it personally through the CIA program that the city had did for a few years. And, you know, I saw the great impacts that that had in our multicultural community, which is our whole community. So, the other question that I had to ask is in regards to funding. When you're asking for funding council today, are you looking for funding for the 2021 year? And if so, how much are you asking for?
Yes, for the funding, I'm asking for the year 2021 and is what we're asking for is 5,000.
Okay, and that's just to run events and stuff like that?
Yes, for the events that we have, like some of the events I stated about, we're having the multicultural speaking in schools. And we're doing some Indigenous teachings and doing some cultural teachings in school. And we're doing the academy as well, the Integration Academy, the community nights, women's support group, and we also have materials and presenters fees as well. So, that was all we came up to that amount for 5,000.
Okay, no, thank you for that. And thanks for coming in, presenting to council. Thank you for the work you did with the city, with CIA and your new path now. Awesome.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Counsel Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Maureen. Nice to see you again. Actually, Counsel Tison asked the same questions that I wanted to know about. So, thank you for your answers, Maureen.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Any further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, Maureen, thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to let you know that our delegation business is handled at the end of our meeting. So, you're more than welcome to join us and listen. I just ask that you turn your camera off for now. And if you do sign off and if there's any follow-up information or requests, administration will follow up with you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you so much, council members. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
All right, moving on to reports under 12.1, a verbal discussion in regards to COVID. I can kick this off lightly and then possibly we may have questions or conversations arise out of it. I know council did have a request for some information internally of just an update on how it was going at the rapid vaccination clinic. We have seen and heard that it's going very well there. You know, the demands on parking haven't been more than what we're supplying currently. We hear through our admin teams and our operational staff that it's going well there. We did have some, there was in the media, there was discussion about vaccination doses being discarded due to a lack of subscription. That isn't happening here from our understanding. It's only happening in other locations such as Edmonton and Calgary. To our knowledge, there had been a reduction in vaccination amounts that we received locally due to some shipment errors on one of the brands of vaccination. But to our knowledge now, the spots that are allocated have been subscribed at the facility. And as far as we know, and I'll maybe CA O'Gallante or Director Miller or Manuel can comment, but from our understanding, everything's going well. And at this point, there's no need for any change or direction from council from my understanding. Go ahead, CA O'Gallante.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And yeah, that is correct. The operations of the emergency center hall, rapid flow through clinic, vaccination centers is progressing pretty well. There is some fluctuations on the amounts of vaccine being received over the last week and in the next week or two. So, the flow kind of peaked at more than 1,000 vaccines in a day for a few days and now it's being reduced for a week or so. So, keep in mind that there is a dynamic supply of vaccines. However, today, the news is that a test of a vaccine will be offered to people 40 and plus. So, we hope that a test of a vaccine will be flowing more rapidly as well through the community. In general, parking is not an issue. We're monitoring the situation around the area. Of course, we're keeping in mind the commencement of downtown Phase Four construction in the near future. So, we have some plans and options as well to relieve any parking issues in the future. That's kind of the update that I can provide. And I know Director Miller as well is on the call for any further details. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Questions from council. Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you. So, in terms of municipal resources that are going into the rapid flow-through clinic, what are we contributing to it and are we receiving compensation from the province for that?
Director Miller.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So, it is some municipal resources we are using at the site and they're, for the most part, it's some permanent staff from our events and entertainment department. And then we're using casual guest experience staff as well. And so, by using the casuals, we can staff up accordingly. So, if there's less vaccines, we bring in less staff. At this point, we're not receiving compensation from the province, but we are carefully tracking the costs. And then if there is an opportunity to recover the money, we'll certainly try to do that.
Go ahead, Counsel Bressi.
Thank you. Yeah, and then my assumption is that this is a regional operation in some regards in terms of, I'm not familiar with others in the region. I assume that residents, that they don't care what municipality you live in to make an appointment here?
Director Miller.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yes, that's correct. You can actually book wherever you, you can go onto the website and book your appointments throughout the province, I think, if you're willing to travel.
Just if I can add a bit to that, Counsel Bressi, you may recall, we were on a call last week through Mayor's, or AMA rather, Spring Caucus. And Minister Mackayver had mentioned that that very question was asked and what it looked like in regards to support of the municipal it looked like in regards to support of the municipalities that were hosting. And, and Minister Mackayver's comment was basically, don't hold your breath. There wasn't a lot of expectation that we were going to get support from, from supplying this opportunity for people to get vaccinated. As we've had earlier discussions, this could be quite a substantial bill at the end of the day. And so, which is a bit unfortunate as well because I know through discussions of other municipalities, that some municipalities have had facilities that were leased or rented on a traditional facility contract and have already received some, some, some financial support. So to hear the minister's comments the other day was, in my opinion, very unfortunate. That being said, I don't think it's something that we let our foot off the gas. This is exactly that, we're right, we are providing an opportunity for the region and, and as we do on many occasions. But getting vaccinated should not only be on the back of the City of Grand Prairie taxpayers. Anyone further? Counselor Blackburn?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So just in regards to that sharing of, of cost, if we're not to come from provincial government, do we have enough records to show which, which of the people receiving vaccines may be from outside of the city? And could we be making our own arrangements with other municipalities?
Director Miller?
Thank you. I'm not certain, but I don't believe we're privy to the address of where the people are coming from. So we just provide the site and direct the parking, direct the traffic well, but we don't know where they're from.
Thank you. Anyone further? Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. Have, do we know how many weeks this clinic might last? Has that been a conversation with AHS yet?
Director Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So initially, they indicated it could run until August and to the end of August is what our, our plan is right now. But it, it changes daily on the number of vaccines available. So, and then the interest in taking the vaccine as well is up and down. So difficult to say, but to, but we did make sure that Teresa Sergeant Hall is clear bookings until August and just trying to make sure we have a site available for the folks in the community to be vaccinated.
CA O'Gallante, you had something to add?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And in addition to Director's, Mayor's comments, we have run some calculations again with the, with the range of options in terms of cost and the, you know, parking management and security and other personnel to, to allow the clinic to function properly for the first round of vaccines, for the second dose, for a period of four months. And this is an order of magnitude. We're estimating in the, in the range of $100,000 or, or plus. But as a, as a midpoint, you know, could be in, in that range for the first round. And this potentially could be repeated times two in the fall or early winter for the second dose. So just to have an idea of, about the, the overall cost for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. I don't know if any others have questions for administration, but I'd love to make a motion if you the lobby.
All right, if you'd like to do that, go ahead.
Great. I would move the council, direct the mayor to write to appropriate officials requesting payment for municipal costs to run the rapid flow through clinic. And just to speak this, it's, healthcare is an area of provincial responsibility that municipalities are stepping up to help with. And I want to acknowledge that the province actually has provided some operating assistance to municipalities to get through COVID. So for me, this is in the principle of municipalities shouldn't help the province to be fair to it has contributed costs to municipalities. And so I'm okay with municipal participation in this. However, I'm not okay with disproportionate municipal participation in this. I think that is completely absurd that the city, where we know that residents on average are less wealthy than the surrounding region, are being asked to carry the costs to vaccinate the entire region. And it's not right. Our government likes to talk a lot about getting a fair deal for Alberta, while we also need a fair deal for our residents. And it's not just city versus county thing. It also is, I know there's other mid-sized cities where the province is paying for this. I don't know if it's because they're different health zones or because they're slightly different facilities they're using, but it's not fair that the City of Grand Prairie taxpayers are being asked to carry a, carry a cost that other taxpayers aren't being asked to carry. So absolutely, I 100% support our administration's approach this so far in terms of making it happen and not slowing down vaccines. I think that that is the right approach to give our help and then figure out funding as we go along. But I also think that we really strongly need to insist that our taxpayers get a fair deal. And I also do think we need to be thinking about, are we going to do this in the next few months if it's going to continue like this? So right now, though, my motion is just to write a letter requesting payment.
That motion is in order. Comments or questions on the motion? Counselor Thiessen and then Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I want to send out some kudos to our admin staff as well for actually making this happen and showing the Grand Prairie get her done attitude in putting this out there for our community. In, in a way similar to Counselor Bressi's intent in motion, but in my own, for my own reasons, we've been told since day one that this, that this whole scenario around COVID wasn't going to get back to normal until we had a vaccine. And that was day one over a year ago. Now, over a year later, we're fronting the funding for this. I, I think more than a year plus a budget is plenty of time for the province, Alberta Health and Alberta Health Services to put together a plan that was funded, that was budgeted for and accrued for and not riding on the backs of, of municipal councils or at least not ours in our community. I think across the province, this should have been better thought out, better planned on how they're going to carry it out and how they're going to fund it. And to have that nebulous question mark at the end of, of all this, are we going to get paid or are we just fronting this for the region? Is something that I don't want to have to answer to my taxpayers for without at least, you know, knocking on the door a few times with the government of Alberta and Alberta Health and say, hey, you know what? We helped you. Now, you know, time's come to pay your bill. So I, I think it's inexcusable personally that, that they would set up these, these vaccine clinics and not have a plan to fund them, but more or less to, to lean on the, on the municipalities to do so. And yeah, for me, that's just unacceptable. So to get payment, to ask for payment, I think is right and righteous. So thanks for making the motion, Dylan.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn, I think I said next.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Bressi and with Counselor Thiessen on this. I was just imagining in my head in the negotiation that we might have over something less serious than this, it would be that, well, if you're not going to pay us, we're not going to do it. But I'm pretty sure the government knows that we wouldn't dare not do it. And that gives us absolutely no leverage. And so I think that what's going to be important is to, to be very insistent in the correspondence that we have with them and also relentless about it. So I'm very much in support of the, of the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Platt?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I'm also in support of the motion for all the things said by my colleagues. And, and I guess for me, I'm actually hoping that, I don't want to put a whole bunch of work on administration, but I think this would be one of those ones, it'd be nice to show the community maybe a monthly, here's what we spent on COVID tracker, because we're constantly being told we're not doing enough and we're, you know, taxes, we do all those things. And this is just one of those things, we may get money back, but we might get, we might not. And I also think educating our, I've always been believing educating our constituents about these things is part of our role. So I think a little tracker showing how much the city is spending month by month, doses showing up or not showing up would be a good idea, but totally support us, letting the province know where we would expect payment back.
Perfect, thank you for that. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of at least asking the question if we're going to get paid. I've talked to a number of people and I told them that the city is actually kind of taking the bill right now and they can't believe it. When I went and got my shot at Teresa Sergeant Hall, we had staff out in the parking lot directing traffic, telling people when their appointments were, showing them the correct way into the building and the correct way out of the building. We had our city staff cleaning after every person received their, their shot, working alongside Alberta Health Services for sure. But yeah, there is a cost and I would definitely like to see us get some reimbursement from that if not fully covered.
Thank you for that. Counselor Minhaz and then Counselor Friesen.
Yeah, I'm 100% supportive of this one, but I really, really appreciate our administration. I give a big part to them, how organized and how many comments I heard good about it than who got injection there in the Teresa Hall. It's so smooth and so easy and some people didn't have to be, they were not even appointed because somebody missed it or something happened. So it's, it's a great job our administration done and organized this stuff. Yes, it's costing us money, but helping a lot of people, but this is a good thing. We pushed the government to get some money back for our taxpayer in Grand Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Friesen?
That's fine, Mayor Clayton. There's really nothing more that I can add.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, seeing no further comments or questions, I appreciate this motion. Counselor Bressi called question. Oh, Mayor Clayton votes in favor. Oh, actually now it popped up. There we go. It's a little slow.
Sending positive vibes your way, girl.
Counselor Minhaz, how do you vote?
I'm bored, yes.
Thank you.
Because I can't get it here, I don't know why.
It's because I had the access. That is passed unanimously. All right, there's no unfinished business, no public hearings. Now we'll move to delegation business. Tonight, we had a presentation from Maureen from the Grand Prairie Intercultural Association. And I'll just ask if there's any business arising from that. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd actually like to make a motion, I think. I, I would like to move that council direct administration to consider funding sources for the ask and report back to the appropriate standing committee.
All right, that motion is in order. Comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, Counselor Blackburn.
Sorry, just for clarification, $5,000?
Yes, that was my recollection. Sorry, I was distracted by my barking dog here. Yeah, it's a $5,000 ask.
All right, so to bring that report back to the appropriate standing committee, call the question, please vote.
On favor too?
Counselor Minhaz votes in favor. I'll just try. Nope, Mayor Clayton also votes in favor. And that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to council member reports, I'm just going to go around the screen as I see from the top left and Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. A few things to report is I had a Sport Connection board meeting and the biggest thing we talked about was Triat Day. Virtual Triat Day was held, I guess that would be two weekends ago now, but there's also work being done to do a in-person Triat Day, knock on wood, provincial restrictions and safety allowing, in June closer, closer to the summer. So a great deal of conversation went into that and especially really what the sport, what we wrestled with a lot is there are some partner organizations that have chosen to defy COVID-19 guidelines. And so that's something that the organization is trying to work, work through in terms of, yeah, we don't know what that looks like for us as an organization, but something the board did very clearly say is that there's going to be insistence that all provincial guidelines be followed during any Triat Day activities. And an organization won't be allowed to participate if they're not going to follow those guidelines. I also had a Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance board meeting. There's a whole lot about water I don't know and I learned that I don't know even more every time I go to a meeting. But a lot of our conversation was around a new source water protection plan being put together. And as I learned about it and as I talked to our own city administration to get up speed, it was great to hear that we already are as the City of Grand Prairie doing most of the things, actually, I think all of the things recommended in the source water protection plan. So it was great just to have confirmed that we are really good stewards of our waterway, which is important because there's a lot of communities that are downstream from us. Those were my appointed things. A few other community things I had was AUMA. We had the Spring Leaders Caucus. It was virtual this time, which kind of sucks, but it was a very good caucus for a virtual event. There were some good workshops and some good discussions that happened. And I'd also just love to highlight city scrub. I don't know if anybody else does city scrub, but I did mine while playing disc golf. So I was part of it on both the disc golf courses and got to pick up a number of garbage bags while also having fun. But I think the real highlight for me was on Sunday, while I was driving to do my own city scrub, I had to go all across town and I counted seven different groups or families out doing city scrub on Sunday, just in one drive across town. So it really was great to see our residents taking pride in their neighborhoods and doing their part to keep our parks and public spaces clean. So I just want to say a big thank you to our staff and our sponsors that makes city scrub happen and an especially big thank you to our residents who volunteer their time to go out and do that.
Great, thank you for that. Counselor Bressi? Counselor Friesen?
So I had a couple of meetings, but I did have the library, regular board meeting at the library. And it's time for the library to be submitting its funding request to the city administration. And the request was finalized, they will be asking for 28.50 per capita, which is an alarming increase, may sound alarming, of 20% actually. However, I'd like to point out that all things considered, it's actually not that significant an ask. The current, the city currently funds $23.70 per capita. The county funds $44.82. The MD funds $27.34. Again, the, the city is funding 23, so they're increasing that ask to 28.50. Also, interesting to note that, or important to note, that the next lowest funded mid-sized city library is funded at $30.43 per capita. So even though they're asking for an increase of 28, to 28.50, we will still be the lowest funded library in mid-sized cities in Alberta. And to put that into perspective, what our library did back in 2020, there were 5,000, sorry, my doorbell just rang, 5,655 curbside pickups that saw a total of 19,000 items borrowed out, loaned out, sorry, just via curbside. Total number of items circulated this year were 298,000, just shy of 298,000 items. There's 114 online programs going with a total of 513 participants. Oh, and digital content, we're quite interested in this as well. There were over 70,000 items of digital content loaned out this year. And this one really was impressive too. The Grand Prairie Public WiFi had over 18,000 connections in 2020 and that was even though they were closed for, for a few months there. So that's how meaningful our library is to our community. So I hope that administration brings forward a recommendation to meet that for ask. I also had the Self-Pace Regional Archives Annual General Meeting and we welcomed the archivists who joined us this year, Stephanie Friesen, no relation. And the biggest exciting thing- And, um, the, the biggest exciting thing this year for the SBR was entering into the agreement to move to the, um, to the Centre 2000. And even though there are some funds set aside, there is a, a new building funds that will cover some renovations and that sort of thing. It still is really expensive to move, so the SBR is hoping for, um, personal donations and may also be back to municipal partners for additional ask. Uh, the, the SBR ended its year really quite well compared to budget. Uh, I think a few organizations are finding that with reduced travel and other expenses and increased grants that offset revenue loss, uh, they really are ending up in an okay position. And SBR is one of those organizations that truly did end up fairly close to budget this year. Bestian Award, which is, that was established in 2007 for significant contribution to the SBR. I'd like to congratulate Grace Wideman, who has put countless hours in over the years and has formerly been a board, a member of the Board of Directors of the SBR. Also a 2,500 hours milestone of volunteer work. 2,500 hours is the equivalent of working, um, full-time, six days a week for a full year. And it was Lita Ascu who achieved that milestone. So thank you to Lita and to Grace for wonderful contribution to the SBR. And it was a, a busy couple of weeks. Um, I, I joined the, um, the library symposium, the AUMA, or the, the Spring Municipal Caucus. And, uh, um, a couple of other, uh, conferences as well. It really seems to be conference season. And one thing I have to say about Zoom, I really appreciate our, our virtual meetings. I do really appreciate that I've been able to attend meetings back to back or, uh, you know, nip in and out of different conferences that I would otherwise not have been able to. So I guess there's a, there's a thumbs up on that note. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Uh, I did have a meeting with the Alberta Combat sports. Uh, it was, uh, about a one-hour meeting long. We explored, uh, different things as different commissions throughout the province can start working together. Uh, what's never been that way before and this consensus is we need to. Uh, we need to make sure that we share all of our information and even have, uh, across the board, uh, fees and schedules. Uh, so that we, uh, entertain, uh, promoters and fighters in the future. That, uh, when they come to Alberta, this, the, everything is going to be, doesn't matter if it's in the southern part, the central part of Alberta, or even the northern part, there'll be a lot of similarities, if not exactly the same. Um, not necessarily, uh, when it comes to fees, there may be a little bit of difference. But, uh, how we run our shows are going to be exactly the same. Uh, one of the concerns was, uh, training and, uh, training standards. So we're working really, really close, uh, to maybe have a standard training as well as standards for the referees and the judges and corner inspectors. And, uh, so that will be, uh, probably something that we would do, uh, in central Alberta. It's, it came up that we could, uh, send our refs, judges and, uh, have a, an actual training, uh, session. It may last a few days, but, uh, that was, uh, an opportunity that popped up. Uh, insurance, venue promoter and competitor insurance, we're trying to work together so we get a pretty fair deal for everybody. And, uh, we were talking about the COVID-19 updates, which everything we talked about has changed since then. So, but I'm just letting you know that, uh, we are, it's in discussion. And we will not host an event in, uh, Grand Prairie, uh, until we've got, uh, everything figured out with AHS. And, uh, there is a promoter that's kicking the doors now trying to get in. And in the province right now, we said we don't want anything happening prior to September. And that's a province-wide thing, so you won't see that, whether it's virtual or whether it's, uh, in person. Uh, I talked to the ABMA. We had our meeting. I kind of called it because I wanted to know more about the Francophone Francophile Network. Uh, what I found out was the contract agreement between Moncton, Lafayette and Quebec City was up for renewal. Quebec City said we can't fund it, and I think I mentioned that earlier. Funding sources were not available from the federal government or the provincial bodies to fund this with the COVID concern, which basically eliminated a lot of things that we would do to, uh, in, in, to get together. And, uh, with that, it was decided to allow the contract to, uh, end. Uh, this is an international group. I suggested that we, uh, have a Canadian group. So from Van, from Vancouver Island all the way to Newfoundland, if needed be, we could have a group. And we're already talking and it looks like it's probably going to go ahead. We're working with some fine details here. And, uh, I know that, uh, Winnipeg, I mean, you know, Winnipeg is on board, so Manitoba, Ontario actually, believe it or not, brought it up. They said they wanted to do something. Uh, New Brunswick still up on, on, on the go. Uh, and, uh, there's other provinces and, uh, and possibly the territories, believe it or not, that want to make sure that the Francophone is not left on the side. It's still part of the community. Uh, as a tourist, uh, issue, it is a huge aspect to a lot of the provinces, regions. And as a, an employment concern, uh, we can, you know, there's a lot of, uh, cities municipalities that said if we didn't have something like this, we wouldn't be able to get employees that are bilingual. And, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're, they're, uh, were born in, uh, born in Canada. Uh, when you look at the, the Francophone school in Grand Prairie, we've got, uh, French-speaking as first language people from South America, Asia, Europe and, uh, North America as well. So, um, it's a big part of our community. Uh, just to give everybody that's listening tonight, approximately 8,000 people of, of our city's population is, French is the first language. So they are a big part. So that's my report. I did have a couple of items that I am doing right now. I'm doing my assessment review board refresher training. This will be about my 10th year on this. And also, uh, I did sit in through the AUMA Spring Municipal Caucus. And yes, uh, I thought it was a really good conference. And, uh, I listened to a lot of interesting speeches and, uh, even got to hear Dylan Bressi a number of times. So, uh, thank you very much. Take care.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Minhas.
Oh my God. I think I'm not going to take that much time. I did go to, we had a good meeting for OHS this, this week. And it took about almost three hours, but they made lots of changes to took the red tape out of it. If I go through all things, it's probably going to take me half hour, 45 minutes, but I'm not going to go that far. I just, example is like making OHS act shorter and easier to understand and follow. Eliminating mandatory health and safety committees and representative on site with the multiply employers and prime contractors, they do the thing there, but if somebody needs it, I can email it to. Creating simplify more accurate process, calculating the number of workers, they made that quite a bit simple. Moving specific health and safety committee and representative rule into the regulations. More flexible health and safety program required disciplinary action complaints that, like human, what people abuse the people. Clear rules around dangerous work refuses. So worker can say no, if they don't feel comfortable to work there. Example, there are lots of stuff. Adding radiation protection law to the OS Act. So they done quite a bit, yeah, I mean, there was a pretty good update and, uh, I feel comfortable we can be working those kind of conditions for all kinds of beings, I have and a lot of the people. So it would help. I appreciate the government finally did, took some red tape out. That's my update today.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Minhas. Counselor Tiesin.
Like here. There we go. Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, yeah, no, it was a pretty busy couple of weeks. Uh, but I'll just, uh, highlight a few things and then have a special presentation at the end. Um, yeah, so I had, uh, committee meetings, uh, as appointed, uh, downtown association strategic priorities working group, a subcommittee for that. Uh, no updates to bring to council yet. Uh, so that I go through the board for all those. Same thing with the executive committee of Peace Library System. We just met this past Saturday. Um, and, uh, some motions were made going forward towards the board for discussion. And, uh, yeah, I'll have some stuff to talk about then because, uh, there are some interesting things that came to the executive and we're going to work it through the board and so then I can update when we're there. And also we had the community opioid task force committee as well. Uh, Counselor Bressi and I were both on that. And, um, I won't, I won't provide any updates, but there is lots going on on that one. I also sit on the subcommittee around, uh, communications and advocacy and strategy. So, uh, we're, uh, we're, we're rolling. Uh, also I attended the Spring Municipal Caucus for AUMA, uh, which is really great. I did hear Dylan Bressi twice. I did see one of his questions get botched once. It was a really good question. I was sad that they, it got lost in the linguistics, but, uh, thank you Dylan for always being active and engaged, uh, especially at that provincial level. Um, we need, we need people to raise their voice every opportunity we get. So I'm glad you picked up the phone, dialed in and even sent in your chat messages for questions too. So that was really awesome. And finally, it was, uh, poetry. It's National Poetry Month, uh, this month, the month of April, National Poetry Month. So I was able to read some poems, uh, and record them with our, our minister, Amanda Westwater, uh, for the kids at Ivy Macklin School. It's my understanding that Counselor Bressi and Mayor Clayton also read poems, if anybody else did. Kevin O'Toole, um, yeah, it's a great thing. I, I actually read two that I wrote myself. Uh, one was called You Are, and I, I shared that by text to Dylan because, well, he seemed like he wanted to read it. And, uh, I, I did another one called Home, and I'm going to read that one for council here today, then I'll be done. All right. So Home, "Just forgive, that's all there is, to clean the slate of a world with hate. Retranslate it to interrelated and spark your divine light within. Then brothers and friends, ladies and men will come together in communities whole, joined in the spirit, linked as one interconnected soul." Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Counselor Tiesin. Appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Plott.
Sorry, technical difficulties there. Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, my, I, I would just want to highlight two meetings, uh, for myself. One of them was our economic recovery meeting. Um, I want to thank Mrs. Lee and her team. We had an agenda that was for two hours and we actually didn't get through it. Uh, we had a lot of robust conversation about some of the incentives and programs that actually administrations proposing, uh, for economic recovery. Well, it's a discussion about them, uh, went back and said, hey, we need to see some changes. So I'm, I'm excited that this, uh, this week, actually, uh, Thursday, we meet again. Hopefully we'll get through those changes. And we'll see something coming to council here in the near, in the near future because some of them I think are going to be well received within the community. Um, the other bit, the other bit for me was the Aqua Terra Showholder meeting. I want to thank our council and Aqua Terra Showholder Board for, um, allowing me to ask some, a lot of questions and being very engaged in that meeting. Um, it was, it's something I think our council's paid a lot of attention to. And I think Aqua Terra is trying to do very, very hardly trying to get as transparent as they can. But I think those meetings are great that we're getting pretty, uh, defined also the questions we're asking and some of the very specific things we'd like to see back. And I'm looking forward to Aqua Terra continuing those conversations. Um, outside of that, life's been okay, uh, all things considered, and that's my report.
Thanks, Counselor Plott. Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, I don't have any external, uh, bodies to report on. However, a couple of things I'd like to say. Uh, first, I don't think I, you know, it was only 10 days ago, nine days ago. So I have not mentioned that, uh, I got my vaccine at, uh, at Monfro's the other day. And, uh, I was very impressed with, uh, first of all, the people that were there helping and guiding me along the way. Uh, on a day when the, uh, the slope from the parking lot to the door was icy. And, uh, I was walked up the, uh, up the ramp, uh, just for safety sake. And, uh, I was shown a lot of kindness inside. It took very few minutes. And, uh, and it looked like, uh, a, a very successfully organized process. So kudos to all of those, uh, who have been organizing and participating, uh, in, in the work there. Um, the second thing I wanted to mention has left my mind, so I'll, I'll leave it for the moment. One of the things that I do want to, uh, say to council and administration is, uh, thank you again for the amount of support that, uh, that you're giving me as I, uh, attempt to, uh, be involved in as many things as I can. Um, and, uh, and it's much appreciated, the support and, and the encouragement. Uh, the other point that I was going to make has come back to me. Um, I'm no longer on the Grand Prairie Library Board. However, I am, as a private citizen, I'm still a member of their planning committee. And, um, each time that we meet, which is once a month, I'm astounded at the amount of work that gets done for the benefit of people in the city. And, um, and I, I would trust that we will give serious consideration to their financial ask. And for me, that's it this time round.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Appreciate that. And you're very welcome. We're happy to help you and don't be afraid to ask for more if you need it. Um, I just wanted to, most of the events that I did have been covered. Um, one thing that Counselor Friesen and I and Counselor Minhas have participated in, um, our intermunicipal collaboration framework meetings with, um, three, the negotiating team from the county and the two CAOs. And we are meeting on a weekly basis. Uh, as you may recall, in a, uh, we asked the Minister of Municipal Affairs for an extension on our ICF. And, uh, we will be, we're in currently in week three of, um, our ASK, which was six weeks. And, um, and, uh, yeah, the meetings, I, I have nothing to report on that, but I just wanted to let you know as well. I attend, I did a proclamation for National Volunteer Week, uh, which is April 18th to 24th. The theme this year being the value of one, the power of many. So, uh, that was a great, uh, opportunity to be able to do that. As well as I did, um, a proclamation for PROBUS. It's, uh, PROBUS month. And, um, had an opportunity to speak with that group, who was a very engaged group, including, uh, past Counselor Helen Rice and, um, and, uh, past CAO Greg Scherbak. So, uh, and Counselor Blackburn is part of that group as well. So that was a, a good discussion. I also, um, had the opportunity to be a speaker at Sunrise Rotary. Um, it was a very engaged group. I was able to update them on many of the capital projects that are happening this summer, as well as the economic relief and support that we're providing in the COVID recovery path. So that was a good discussion as well. Um, on a personal note, I, I'm a public member of the Grand Prairie Storm Board. I attended that meeting as well as a public member on the Downtown Association Strategic Planning Committee. So attended that and again, attended the Spring Leaders Municipal Caucus meetings as many of my fellow colleagues. So I, with that, I will wish you all good night and, uh, thank you for your time and call the meeting adjourned. Counsel, um, I'm just, uh, have, I have a 10-minute phone call before we hop on to our other meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.